You're all set, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. So the Newton Planning Board would like to call a public meeting on October 25th at 7:02 PM. First, I would like to salute the flag. The Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And people, please make sure you're not on mute. So in person tonight, we have Mr. Marshawn, Mr. Piper, Mr. Guide, Mr. Lavoy, and online we have Ms. White, or remote, I should say. Annie Collier is not present today. I think she excused herself as well, if I recall. I think I got an email from her.
Actually, she did send an email that said that she wasn't going to be here tonight.
So first thing on the agenda tonight, we have a hearing for a lot line adjustment for Robert J. and Joseph W. Fiera of Newton, New Hampshire, between the properties at 2537 Country Pond Road. The properties are referenced as Tax Map 5, Block 1, Lot 1, and Tax Map 6, Block 2, Lot 1. And I don't see anybody here to represent that project. Jen, do you want to?
I would recommend you at least move it down on the agenda on the off chance they come. If they do not come, you can continue it to the next case. That's taking up the application since they're not here.
Okay.
And them being here is a component of it being complete. You want to hear from them to allow them the opportunity if they don't show up later this evening.
Okay. Do we have to make a motion for that? Or?
No, you can just, as the chair, move it down on the agenda.
Sure. Let's hold that and see if they show. Second on the agenda, we have a continuation for 125 Development Corp. of Plastown, New Hampshire, request for a public hearing for a four-building condominium site plan off South Main Street in Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 14, Block 1, Lot 27.
Dash three.
Thank you, dash three. So Tom?
There is a letter requesting a continuance.
Okay, this is the?
Due November 9th.
Okay, from Mr. Barry Guyer?
Yeah, Barry Guyer, engineer, yes.
Yep, from Jonesa Beach. So he did submit us a letter to continue specifically with the existing conditions plan.
Right. We missed the deadline Thursday just by a little bit.
Okay.
But everything we need to bring in, but we'll have it ready for the next one. But I believe we won't be there on the 9th because of the election. It will be another two weeks.
No.
Am I correct?
The 9th is the Wednesday. That's the meeting date.
We opted, so last meeting when you guys weren't in attendance, we, let me just pull up my calendar so I get the.
Oh, so you moved it to a Wednesday meeting?
We moved it to a Wednesday meeting to allow, so we wouldn't.
Does that interfere with the ZBA? Do you know?
It does not. I believe we checked.
ZBA is the week before?
Yeah, they should be meeting, I think it's the 2nd of.
It's the 2nd.
Last check when they're meeting.
Okay. So we will submit everything prior to we needed, that we had agreed upon.
Okay.
For that meeting, so I'm just going to request a continuance for that.
Yeah, you want the 9th? Is that your?
The 9th.
Okay.
I'll take the 9th, yeah. I didn't realize you guys hadn't made a change. We weren't here, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, and we, at the last hearing, we made it, we would reconvene to see if we needed a meeting after Thanksgiving, which I believe is the 29th.
Okay.
Is what we said. I think we cut, kind of agreed on that. If we had a bunch of applications in or an applicant needed to get in front of us.
Okay.
We would be happy to accommodate that.
Okay, I'm going to leave that up to Barry Guyer to announce that, would you?
Okay.
For that. So other than that, we did manage everything done, and we just, like I said, we missed Thursday at 2:00.
Yep.
Unfortunately.
Awesome.
Okay, thank you, Board.
Mr. Fiera? No?
Yes.
Yes, that is Mr. Ferrara.
Ferrara.
Yeah.
Perfect. Do you want to go live right now? We just.
You need a motion.
Okay.
Take a motion to create.
A continuance.
Continuance, public hearing to November 9th, 2022.
Yeah.
Yes. Second, someone?
Second.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Sorry, Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Marshawn?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Sorry, point of clarification. Is this going to be for 27-3 and 27-4? Because there's two different items on the agenda.
This, that was 27-3.
Yeah, that was.
Just 27-3.
27-3 is first.
Got it.
7-4 is second.
Okay. Okay.
Sorry, is it Fiera or?
Ferrara.
Ferrara, like Ferrari, but Ferrara, Ferrara. Okay, Mr. Ferrara, the floor is yours. We have, since you're a couple minutes late, we pushed you on the agenda, but if you want to explain your application in front of the planning board.
I didn't know what I was doing. Your microphone.
So here, I'll help you, I'll walk you through it.
Sorry, I didn't even know what I was supposed to be doing.
It's no worries.
Don't worry about it. So you have a application in front of us for a minor lot line adjustment.
Correct.
Before we could actually review or accept your application, you had to be in front of us, so that was one of the conditions. Ms. Rowden, our circuit rider, did a review to confirm whether or not we could take jurisdiction, and she may or may not have some comments.
So my comment is pretty simple. I do think the application is complete. It is not creating any new lots. It is creating more conforming lots, or in one case, more conforming, the other one was already conforming. Because it's a minor lot line adjustment, you actually do not have to have a public hearing on it. But if anybody in the public wanted to speak about it, they are given the opportunity. So you do have to make a motion, but you actually do not have to have a public hearing. Unless the other folks in the audience have comments about this application.
That is something the Board may wish to consider changing in their policies and procedures. Policies and procedures of the Newton Planning Board require a public hearing.
Okay.
The state law does not.
So do we have to waive it?
You can have the public hearing if you want to, if that's easier.
No, no, no. If we don't want to, do I need to make a motion to waive the public hearing, which is only a Newton My Law, and then accept jurisdiction and then go through it that way?
You could.
I'll make a motion to waive the public hearing for this specific lot line adjustment.
Second.
Is there a second?
I said second.
Mark.
Sorry.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Marshawn?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
No, that was just the public.
That was just a way of that.
Now I'll make a motion to accept jurisdiction.
Second.
I'm getting ahead of myself today.
That's all right. It's all good. Mr. Marshawn's second.
Marshawn's, yeah. Not me, Marshawn.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Marshawn?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
So now you need, if you're ready, a motion to approve the lot line adjustment.
Do you want to continue, Dan?
So you're just asking, you're just trying to make the lots more conform? That's your intent?
Correct.
Lot line adjustment?
Correct.
All right, I just wanted to hear.
Yeah, the original plants from back in 1970 had a proposed road behind the lot, which doesn't even exist, so I'm just stretching the line back a little bit. That's it. It's really actually pretty minor.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
There are two boiler plates unanimously.
Yep.
One is to set new bounds, and the other is to supply recordable My Law.
Yeah, still moved.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Marshawn?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
That was it? Painless.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming. If you didn't come, we wouldn't have been able to do it, so.
Sorry, I had to come all the way from London. I just got stuck in traffic.
All good. So you'll get a piece of paper in a couple days?
I'll do a notice of decision on Thursday, and I'll record the My Laws when they're presented and after you sign them.
So you are all set?
Your engineer knows he has to supply recordable My Laws.
Yeah.
So as soon as those come in, it'll get recorded, and it will then exist.
Okay, so that's the next step?
Excuse me?
That's the next step?
Yeah.
All right, I'll talk to him tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. And let me rotate through this. Okay, so third on the agenda tonight, we have a continuation of 125 Development, New Hampshire Corp. of Plastown, New Hampshire, request for a public hearing for an amended site plan at 3, 5, 7, and 9 Puzzle Lane, Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 14, Block 1, Lots 14, sorry, Lots 27-4. Ms. Rowden, do you have any comments or?
I have received no new information on this site, so I do not have any comments.
So before you, you said it's a continuation. We actually didn't take any jurisdiction.
There's no jurisdiction. It's not been taken on.
Right. So my cheat sheet says continuation, but so it's a.
It hasn't been started yet.
It's a continuance.
Yes, it's a continuance.
The case got continued from the last, first, and the last September meeting, but it is not a continued public hearing.
So the applicant provided, just so the public knows, a copy of the KV Partners memorandum from September 16th, 2022. So this is KV Partners, for explanation, is the engineer, or the town's on-call engineer that can provide third-party review or their professional opinion of basically whatever we ask them to. They also provided a couple photos of the site. Ms. Rowden has not seen any of this.
Do we have?
The photos.
Annie, are you going to give it to Ms. Rowden?
Or, and my guess or understanding is that the.
Ms. White still.
Oh, yeah, Ms. White does not have a copy.
Right, she won't, yeah, she won't. It'll be fairly short.
Mike Mcnally has also, the KV Partners engineer, has not seen anything, but okay. So.
Good evening, Board. Tom Lekborg, Northern Constructors Builder for 125 Development. Again, we're doing the new ass built for this also to create new My Laws to get it to where we need it to go. We need to deal with this letter, and we missed it by a day. So I'm going to ask for a continuance on this too later, but the owner, Mr. McDonough, would like to speak to the Board for a little bit tonight, so. So the pictures you're looking at, the wheelchair ramps, that we're being told are deficient. We're not. We're deficient on signs, but anyway, I'll turn it over to Mr. McDonough, and we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. Coleman McDonough, owner of 125 Development.
Can you just pull the mic down just a smidge? Thank you.
Yeah. Again, as Mike states in his letter, I was kind of shocked, you know, I haven't seen him in four years, and he showed up, and he's shown some deficiencies. The island, the shape of the septic will be resketched on the, the ass built that will show. We did not put in the islands, the truck routes and traffic and the volume of trucks and the way they turn. We're not installed. The guardrail, I thought we had asked for a waiver on the guardrail. I did go out and look at the rocks that my operators had placed, and there is two or three different areas where there is smaller boulders. We've used boulders throughout the subdivision to give it kind of the natural country look. We do have some guardrail, and it appears, you know, it gets broken with the snow plowing and the loaders and what have you, snow removal. So we're looking to get that waiver. Mike has stated in Pond D and G that it appears to be different on the plan. We did the construction of these ponds, and we use GPS, so, I mean, it's fairly accurate. You know, all the ponds, the ponds have germinated. They've been in for three or four years. I mean, they're all functioning. We don't have any siltations. We've, we maintain them, we cut them, you know, you know, for paper and debris and, you know, cut the trees and keep the shrubbery down in the ponds. Pond J and I, the north end of the building, I believe, and I could be wrong, that those were swept ponds for temporary construction, because it is a little bit confusing on the plan with those ponds. But if you put them on the finished plan, it's kind of hard to build Pond J and Pond I, which again, I think were temporary ponds for the construction runoff, to be built on the side of a three-to-one slope. It just, we try to stop building them, and they just don't work on a three-to-one slope. But Steve Casey's plans will show all the ponds and his revised plan. And as far as the cars and trucks parking in front of the building, there's very minimal parking in front of the buildings, and we get into, you know, we put these buildings up in speculation that, you know, people are going to come to the town and purchase the buildings, and, you know, we've got to kind of meet their needs if they need a door or, you know, they'll come back into Bob Donovan. There is, there is like three-tenant fit-ups, and I don't know if the town realizes how much money, you know, all the building and registration of vehicles and that, you know, goes on in all these buildings. Turner Motorsports is, I mean, to turn the television on, he's on every Saturday and Sunday on ESPN. I mean, they're a national, they're backed by a billion-dollar contractor, bought in Boston, Vinnie Baletta. You know, they have temporary trailers right now that have been approved by Shanti, the old building inspector, and they were inspected by John, the fire marshal, and there was some revisions and shuffling around with the fire access road, and that's in full compliance per John, the fire chief. Mike has been, you know, again, he hasn't been around for four years, so he's coming up to speed on a lot of this stuff. As you see, he says that there doesn't appear to be any handicaps. I think that I took, I ran around real quick before coming up to the meeting, and there was probably, I don't know, five or six handicap, you know, sidewalks. We are, we are a little deficient on the signs. I think there was two or three handicap signs missing, and we have those from New England Barricade that just didn't happen to get up, but we will install them, the handicap signs. The parking lighting, we've been like, we've bent over backwards for our neighbors, and we've kind of tried to, you know, appease them in any way, shape, or form, you know, whether it's noise or lighting. There's about, I'm going to say all told, probably about 15 people with Munters. Munters probably has about five people. Turner has, Turner Motorsports has about six people there, and Sonny's. They have a transient staff in that, you know, some of the salesmen go out, and there is a small area that we put a septic system in back on, Bill Gregzak designed a septic system, and it was on the, what is it, the southwest side of the building, in that after the septic system went in, it's an H20-loaded septic system, we just left it kind of a gravelled area. And, you know, if we have to do a waiver on that, you know, we will. But Turner Motorsports has its, you know, transient salespeople that, you know, maybe go out every now and then, or park overflow cars, you know, in that area. You know, I think it's, you know, pretty much all buffered by the tree line, and I don't think it hurts people. I mean, they're not big, loud trucks. They just, you know, pick up delivery trucks that, you know, go out. So with, you know, with that, I don't see it as a major problem. The fire access road, everybody's been in these buildings for, you know, for, you know, three, four years now. But the one thing that I really did want to point out is Mike's letter and that, you know, we'll get a clean letter for Mike, and that we have another neighbor, James Fitzpatrick, that's wrote a letter to the Board also, and that, you know, it really, it kind of upsets me that you have a planting and it's behind the building. And when we were cutting and constructing that slope, all those plants were addressed in the planting during construction, and the species of, like a lot of the trees, they wouldn't even grow in this region. I mean, a couple of nurseries told me, we'll sell them to you, Coleman, but they won't, they won't live in this region. And that was addressed, there was a fully addressed meeting, and this is years ago, this is probably six years ago, and this was all addressed in a meeting, and we said, you know, these aren't really aesthetic trees that, you know, people were going to say, this is beautiful, whatever, the moral of the story, and I think the point was, is that that both subdivisions, Sargent Woods and Walnut Farms, you know, wouldn't see our commercial and industrial buildings. So it was accepted at that meeting that we would transplant native trees that came out of that slope. There was, you know, beautiful pine trees that, you know, that's conducive to the region and area. They were probably bigger than the species that was called for, and we took all of those plants off of all of the slopes that we filled in. Matter of fact, Walnut Farms, the tree cutter came through our property, and there was a big gap in the property. So we filled all of the thin areas and all the gaps, you know, to address the buffer. And we also did it when we were building the pond over near Sargent Woods, and this was all addressed in a meeting, and James Fitzpatrick bought in Walnut Farms, and again, we're really respective to the neighbors. And Jim, before he bought his house, I flew balloons and spent like four hours with James Fitzpatrick, in that I showed him where the top of the roofs would be, the locations of the buildings, everything, and he went and bought. And with the planting that we have, that was existing, it ran short of the building and the line of sight from James Fitzpatrick's, line of sight from his house to Sonny's, which is, you know, 9C. And Annie Collier, there was a lot of people involved in this, because he was calling the town, and Shanti was involved in this, Tom was involved in it, Annie Collier was involved in it. This was, you know, this went on for quite a bit. And Annie basically said to me, you know, listen, just do whatever you got to do to make James Fitzpatrick happy. And we came out, Shanti said the same thing, we addressed it. I went over there personally twice and then addressed it with Mr. Fitzpatrick, and he said, Coleman, don't you worry, I'm going to go see Tom, and we'll square this away, and we'll address this line of sight to make him happy. So he had this buffer in between the industrial building and his house. This was all addressed, you know, orchestrated. Shanti was aware of it. Tom went over, we bought the trees. There's 14 trees. I mean, they're going to, they're going to fill in. They're probably at a spread of 10 feet. You can't put them together, you know, together on top of each other, because with the growth of them, they won't grow. So, but we put these 14 trees up, and I spent about $14,000 trying to, you know, appease Mr. Fitzpatrick, and I'm just, I'm appalled at his letter that he wrote, and, you know, I even, obviously, Shanti's working up in Portsmouth, New Hampshire, and, you know, he's, he's not going to stick his neck way out, but he was fully aware of, you know, this, you know, special planting that we did for Mr. Fitzpatrick. So.
So I have a couple questions, Mr. Coleman. The photos, are these to indicate that this is ADA accessible?
Correct.
So I'm looking at these, and my professional opinion is they're not. So the pavement, it looks like you have binder down?
Yeah, so.
And it's not flush?
Exactly. If we put in, we will put in a temporary, you know, until we, you know, do the final pavement. I know it's, I know it's no excuse, but there isn't any handicap people in any of the.
Well, that's, so what happens is, you're asking us to say this is, matches the plans we approved, and you're showing me it doesn't, and the lender is going to say, we approved it, and when the lender comes back for some, this is how this all got brought to us, and says, the Newton Planning Board says it's compliant.
Do you?
And, sorry, go ahead, Jen.
Mr. McDonough's property has been approved through the planning board process and be approved for certain things. It's been identified that there are some things that were approved that it does not match. They're here for an amended site plan, which one of the goals is to bring it into what is on the ground will match what has got, is, they're attempting to go through the planning board, so everything matches what's on the ground, what's been approved. Some of those items might include landscaping. It might include whether some ADA things need to be addressed or brought up, some of the other things in Mike Mcnally's letter. I think the goal is for everybody to have it all be concurrent, that what's on the plan that you get approved is what is on the ground. Now, there's some things that might have to go in between to make it up to regulation or a clean letter from Mike Mcnally when you get to that point. or a clean letter from Mike Vignelli when you get to that point, but I think that's the goal.
That's summarized much better. So that's, I was just trying to like note that, you know, Mr. McNally has identified some things and you may have a professional to say, you know, Mike's wrong.
I didn't say Mike was wrong, I'm just saying that he said there's no handicaps, you know, ramps, and, you know, I mean, short of the asphalt, I mean, you know, matching it to the lips of the...
Which means it's not ADA compliant. So we have a hard time of saying that, you know, we approved an ADA compliant space and it's not.
Sure. All right, so, how do I explain this? Every building that's over there has been under construction for quite some time. As we get new tenants, they went back on the construction. Munters is new, as you guys know, for about a lot, whether it been three months and they're still under construction. Turner, the minute we sell the building, it will go under a six-month construction project. So are we deficient in some of the paving at the ramps? Yes, I agree with you, I'm not saying that. So I guess what I'm saying is that we're coming with an ASB build of the conditions as they are, and then we'll have to go forward from that point on. But it's gonna change again, is what I'm saying to you. So we're in kind of a perilous situation right now. So what happens is that the minute we close on Turner, we tear a whole bunch of stuff apart and start over again, which will be in front of you, will be in front of, well, as code enforcement and bill inspector requires that we need to do. Because he's the first place we're gonna, you know, stumble into. So at some point, it makes no sense to finish some things because we know they're gonna change. So I know what you're saying. Look, there's some verbs that was wrong, there's some things that wasn't right on the first Mylar. We did it the first time, I mean, it's done, but the bank's not accepting it because there's some issues. I wish we're here for them, you know, to fix it. So I'm saying to you that is, all banks are a little different. But, and I know where you're coming from, where you're saying that, you know, you're approving something that's not correct. Well, you did approve it already once. We're already being taxed extra $150,000 for the condoization of the units. So what I'm saying to you is that I'm...
So, I just have a question.
I'm asking you to work with us. We're gonna come with what you were asking for, which, like I said, which unfortunately we were just a little short on time to make it happen last Thursday. But I'm saying that that's, our builders can't, I know the planning board wants everything written in stone, but it's not always that way. And we, I know everybody's sitting here except for Barbara White and Annie are new and haven't been in the process with us, you know, prior. And we've always been sort of like, okay, well, we're gonna get you the shell, we're gonna get you the meat and bones, and then this week, the tenants do the tenant fit-ups, things change. You know, so if you did an ASB build of the whole park, there'd be a lot of things that wouldn't be exactly how they were. Because things keep, it's fluid. And it's the same thing again, like, you know, say the earlier thing, just not back up too much, but, you know, the ASB built current conditions for a Phase Two. It's, I'm driving the engineers crazy because I'm moving every two days, things are changing. So we're gonna have a snapshot of the minute when it's done. So what I'm saying is, yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna work with Mike on the deficiencies to get a clean letter. And we'll have a new set of prints, you know, to record, but like I said, we'll have to continue what to do because we missed the deadline.
And, sorry, Ms. Roden.
So the ASB build can include, I'm sorry, what you are putting in your minor site plan can include notes of, you know, we intend to do this at this point.
Okay.
It can include that information. The ASB build will be a dated plan, this is how it's built as of this date. It can include components of, we will be doing this at this point. Yes, it can include that information. You know, if it still falls under minor, depending on what that might be, that might be...
They're all minor.
I just, that caveat that if it's big, it might not fall under minor anymore. But if it is, then working through to get the clean letter from Mike Vignelli, having the ASB built and noting what might change, because you might need to come back in for an amended site plan. But that allows you that flexibility while the town also knows what is going on and what is intended to be out there.
Okay.
So I think that everybody can work together, we just all need to be on the same page about what is happening, what is there and what is happening.
And that's kind of what I was getting to, like, the plan that's in front of us is showing things that isn't there. So if it's like proposed ADA parking, or that's an easy one for me to pick out, or like pond removed, just the notation, so that way we can say, oh, 125 decided to move this building two feet, there's no impact.
Well, we never move the buildings.
I'm just picking, that's...
So what happens mostly is, we add garage doors, we subtract garage doors, we add entrances.
And that really doesn't affect...
And we think 100 people are coming to occupy the space, five come. And that's what's happened now, we got, we got five, six and five. Sonnys is transient, we don't know how many, they can be three one day, 12 the next, because their sales, their sales forces rotates. So what I'm saying is that it's hard for us to anticipate that till we actually, the customers happen in. So these buildings are occupied, they've met all life and safety, they have occupant permits. So, you know, we work with the building department, everybody else, so you realize, yeah, there's a few things, like you're looking at the handicap ramp, because if you, we know we might rip that out and it might get changed again. So, you know, we're like, we try to spend what we need to spend, we don't spend just to, just to, you know, meet the letter of the day for the day and then rip everything back out again. It doesn't make financial sense for anybody. So I guess what I'm saying is that, this is where we're at, we're gonna give you the plans of what we have and we're gonna continue this meeting and we'll see you.
On the nine?
I think that, right? So that would be the request.
Okay, that's fine by me. So do we need a motion to continue to the ninth?
Make a motion to continue to the next meeting?
And is it Mr. Casey is...
Mr. Casey's doing that plant, so...
Okay, yeah, I'm trying to keep the...
Well, he has them done, but in my opinion, I'm not satisfied, so we're gonna, but we still have time, so it's minor.
Second?
Thank you. Those Bob and then Mark. Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
I would definitely do what Jim talked about with those notes.
I got it. I gotta get it done, you know what I mean?
Okay, so next on the agenda is some board business. So we have approval or acceptance of the minutes from, this says August 23rd, but I believe it's...
It's not, it's September 27th.
September 27th. Motion to approve September 27th minutes.
Second.
Who moved that?
I did.
Second.
Mr. Guide.
Second, this is Barbara.
Okay. I'm sorry, but it's sometimes... Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next is acceptance of the NEPRA manifest dated October...
Dated 10/25.
25th.
Will make a motion to accept?
For the amount of $1,649.13. Sorry, Bob.
Second.
Where are you at, Ben? All I got is red.
Yeah.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
And...
The note that was on the manifest.
Oh, yes. So the account for 141274, which was 125 Development...
That was the one that was just discussed.
Just discussed. We're gonna have a negative balance of $464 based on the additional legal fees and review by the engineer, so based, this letter and his time out there. So we should make a motion to request additional funds for, Jim's recommendation is for an additional $1,000, so we would have about $546 remaining, if my math is right.
I'll make a motion. Second.
And you, you'll work with the applicant, Jim, for that, or their representative?
I'll do a letter that you can send to the applicant.
No problem.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Next is an update on the capital improvement plan and I think...
So Annie, can I speak freely? So Annie and I had a conversation with Mark A., our new town administrator, that was great. He's gonna sort of take the reins on chasing all the individual departments, which we're very appreciative of, for the necessary information that will inform it. So we should be having another meeting with him, hopefully in the next month or two, but definitely before the end of the year.
Can I request that that is not during business hours?
That that is, oh, the follow-up meeting?
Yes.
Yes, we'll do.
Any other comments on that? Next is review of the land use chapter of the master plan.
Sure. I do apologize for not being at the last meeting, but you did not want me here, I was quite ill. I do have a couple of copies I printed, if anybody wants to look at it. But one of, the item that I specifically requested you guys discuss was the outreach event, that's sort of part of our contract, to see if you were amenable to doing more of a survey questionnaire type public engagement. We actually have a lot of people from the master plan survey back, done back in 2020, that wanted to follow up with additional information with master planning. Your social media, for better or worse, is fairly prominent in Newton as well. So being able to get more public engagement then would actually probably show up to a meeting. So I do have a draft survey that I had started to put together for being able to do that. It is a very, I'm calling it a survey, it's more of a couple of questions with a map-based component. I have not uploaded the draft land use chapter, your land use map, or the zoning map yet, but I'll have that there with information about what that is showing, so people can have the draft chapter. Most people are probably not going to look at the whole thing, but it will be there for them to be able to view. I'll have a sort of a quick little summary about what it is and what it contains. But we do have information about, and I apologize, the narrative did not, explaining what this was, for some reason, is not showing up at the moment. But a couple of very short questions, some of them are repeats from the original survey, just to sort of touch base with people, it's not a lot. It's mainly the, when you think of Newton in five, 10, or 20 years, what would you like to see? It does have a more specific, what would you like to see about the land use in town? And then asking a similar question, but what land uses would you like to see less of? Usually asking the positive first and then the negative. People will comment. So that, it's easier than having multiple choice, people can just write short sentences, they can write essays if they want to, most people it will be somewhere in between. But the more important question is actually this map-based question, and you guys had a better response to a map-based question than a lot of towns have. I don't know if it was just the users that were able to do it. But what you're able to do is add a point. Where you can put a point in and say, I really like this here, or I really don't like this kind of use, I don't want to see more of it in town.
I just have a question. Do people, users like, single out like, I hate this house? It's their neighbor. I'm just, I, I look at what is on this Facebook page...
Or maybe it's a wife that's commenting on her husband's work.
So, I'll just, as a background, when we had, when we did the survey, and this is how it's set up with this too, if there is negative language used, or strong language is how it's sort of phrased, it will alert the person commenting on any of these comments, not just the map, and say, you're using really strong language, do you want to revise what you're saying? Because it's upfront, you know, comments are public. People can do it anonymously, it's set up that they can either put their name or not, because that does encourage more people to comment. But if someone puts something like, I hate that purple house, the word hate will trigger the AI, I get an email and that comment will not be visible until a human reviews it. And most of the time it triggers, it's something benign like, oh, I hate it when people have ugly lawn ornaments. I'm gonna let that comment be...
Be this intersection or something?
Yes.
You did the original share, right?
Yeah, it works really well, you know, in all of the surveys I've now done in this region, I think I've only ever had three comments that we had to redact because it accusatory of an individual. So we left all the comment, we just blacked out their name. So yes, someone might say, I don't like that house. More people are going to say, I don't like the design of that subdivision, I don't like the look of that building, I wish, we're probably gonna get it in this survey, I wish something would be done about Rose Corner, we're gonna probably get other things besides land use, we're gonna get, I don't like that intersection, I don't like this, you know, why is the beach always turning green? You know, we're gonna get that kind of comment too. So, I mean, we'll be able to filter it out. But it's meant to be a fairly wide open check-in with people. We have a lot of comments from the original survey where we had 400 some odd responses. So trying to do some similar outreach of having it posted on Town Hall, social media, listservs, if you are able to share with your neighbors, that's always helpful. But, you know, if we can get 200 people to take it, that would be awesome, that's better than we would have, show up to a meeting and provide some input. And then I've got a couple of demographic questions here, just to see how people, how long they've lived here and if they own a business, or if they've been longtime residents or newer, age, employment situation, income, and then where do you live? This lets people put in what neighborhood they live in without identifying their exact location. So that's, the reason for this one is that then you can see, well, does everybody on the south side of town not like all of the industrial activity? Or is it not a problem? Or do people not like the shooting range? Like, is that something that is really getting flagged by a lot of people and they live close by? Or they don't live close by on the other side? So it can give you some really interesting metrics.
Can I advocate for one more inclusion in terms of figuring out who's responding?
Sure.
It would be good to know if the respondents have kids or not. Is that, is there a way to word that?
I can certainly ask, is anybody in your household under the age of 18?
Just because it would be interesting from, like, if they're commenting on like recreation, for example, if they have kids, we could probably figure out a little bit more about where that's coming from.
Okay, yeah, I can add that. That's an easy ask.
You want some? We're giving them away, I mean, I got a couple.
I do have a general comment, like, is there something else you wanna, just a improve, change about Newton? That's just a sort of a catch-all, if people have more they want to say. And then would you like to receive follow-up updates? The list we have is extensive, I want to say it's 150 people, somewhere in that ballpark, that signed up last time, that I will, I'm gonna say spam again, to let them know this is out there, but it lets you build, and then build more repertoire. And I can take whatever response they give to this survey and couple it with any responses they gave from the previous survey, it just helps you to build sort of a user-based profile.
Cool.
So trying to have this go out, I'd like to get it out in the next couple of days, unless you guys want to see sort of the final, final version. It would, it's gonna be similar to this, all out the question, with a little narrative. It would... It's gonna be similar to this, all out the question, with a little narrative at the beginning.
I think we push it out sooner rather than later, because I want to make sure we get it out before Thanksgiving gets too close.
Yeah, I will say, it would be good... While I would like it to only be out for maybe 10 days, I think because of the election noise a little bit, it might be good to have it go at least past the election. Or we can see where we are, like, 10 days after it's released. And then, if we haven't hit that, you know, 150 responses, 200, we just leave it up a little bit longer.
Yeah, that's perfect.
And the election's the 8th?
The 8th.
Yeah.
So, if you...
I'd almost drop it on November 1st and then push it out for two weeks, 14 days. No?
I mean...
I mean, instead of doing it for 10 days, right? So, you drop it. You have that week before the election, and then you have the week after the election.
That's perfectly fine. I usually try to hit two weekends, because a lot of people will do this stuff on Thursday, Friday. But, I mean, that would work with that. Have it go from, yeah, the 1st to the 14th.
As soon as there's a link, I can put it on the planning board. I can put it on the master plan page. And I can speak to Diane about putting it on the homepage of the town.
Yeah. The link will be publicinput.com, and I made a URL that's Newton Land Use... It might be Newton Land Use 2022.
When you have the name, just email.
Did Annie share it on Facebook last time?
Yeah, I think she did.
I'm also able to post to the Newton.
Oh, that'd be great.
Channel, so...
Three different Newton pages, probably up to five now.
I think I have... I think I'm on the Newton unofficial one, and then...
There's no official, there's no Newton official.
No, there's one that's called, like, the Newton unofficial or unaffiliated community page.
Not town-sponsored.
I'm on at least... I'm on at least two of them.
There's like four, but it's Newton Friends and Family, not town-sponsored is the biggest one.
Okay. I'm on two that have at least a couple thousand people. So... But I will say, as planning board members, if you are on social media and are willing to share, that also helps. I can't really do a targeted Facebook ad, except for the direct post, because Newton, it's just too small.
I think we can easily get the message out.
We can get it shared.
So, if we're amenable to that, we will push that out, get comments. We can use the comments we received to change anything in the chapter, and then refine the goals, and hopefully be off to the races. That said, I do have a question for the board. Technically, our contract ends on the 30th for doing this work. Are you amenable to... There's a little bit of funding left. Are you amenable to paying the contract? Or do you want to wait for it to be 100% done? Either one is fine. I just need to know if I need to write up an extension letter. It makes no big difference to us.
What's the dollar value?
We talked about that before, about if the funds were there, that we were gonna use the funds and just pay it towards the contract.
I mean, you already contracted to pay it. I just... Admittedly, the work is not completely done, so...
Excuse me. Bob, do you have your microphone on, because I can hardly hear you?
I do.
About now.
Yes, now I can hear you better. Thank you.
My apologies. I must have moved it and put it on mute. But as I just said, that I believe that we talked about this before sometime towards the beginning when we discussed this, and that's what we talked about. If there were funds left towards the end of the year, that we were gonna use those funds and apply them towards getting this done.
Yeah, you guys have already paid, I think it's 1,600 towards this contract. It might be 1,800, but it's in that ballpark. You've already paid. So, if you want an extension letter, that's fine. That's not a big deal for us.
Jim, can you put it in the minutes that we are verbally extending their contract, so she doesn't have to write an extension letter? I'm just trying to save you, like, 20 minutes.
Well, I was just gonna say, for the 9th, I could have a... I could put it on the manifest to pay off the remaining balance.
Sure.
I mean, at that point, the survey will be at least running, so...
And then that can send me a bill, so I have...
Everybody's good with that?
Yep, sounds good.
Sounds like a plan.
And I will say, were there any other comments? I looked at the minutes, and I didn't see a whole lot.
They were just...
Other than making this into two columns, possibly to match your other chapters, which I can do as we get towards the end.
Yeah, and I think you were just taking it, like, formatting it and reading it beforehand. I think that's why you didn't want to release it when you were sick.
Oh, just when that came up, and I didn't think about it when it came up under the discussion. On the other chapters, it was formatted in two ways. One is single column, the way it was presented. And the other was the two columns, because when you put it on a website, having the two columns, you end up scrolling down and then having to scroll back up to read the next column. So, the other chapters are in both formats. And just as some of those people has a hard time after a while reading text, if you have to scroll all the way down the page and then scroll back to the top of the page to read the second column, people just stop reading.
Right.
So, can we fix it?
Excuse me?
Can we fix it?
Yeah, by putting it all in one, you know...
That's what I'm saying. Your plan's already in columns, huh?
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, but you can fix it pretty easily, right? It's not like a big deal. Yeah, let's do it all. Don't do the two-column thing. Do all one column.
Well, the two-column is intended for the booklet.
Okay. We're in 2022. All right? So, most things are gonna be online now.
Okay. I just want to throw that out there, because...
I am in favor of not scrolling down on my computer and then scrolling back up to read the same thing. I'm good. Make it all one column.
How about for my purposes? We'll stick with it like this for now. If we want a formatting tweak before the final version, we'll talk about it.
Okay.
That sounds good.
That works.
Thank you.
All right. That's all I have for... I think I'm the next thing, though.
You are, grant updates.
All right.
And that, of course, still has to go through spell check, right?
I think it's...
I think it's probably already edited.
Yeah. I mean, I have done it. It hasn't got through final, final copy.
That's what I mean.
It will.
Okay. Because I said I read the whole thing. There were a couple things I picked up.
There probably are. I'm not infallible.
Nobody... I know, nobody's perfect.
All right. So, the next thing I have, and this was gonna be... We talked previously about the grants that are available for planning and zoning. I'll share this so people can see it as well. So, these are the housing opportunity. They're called the HOP grants through New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority. This is state COVID money. The state has chosen to take some of that COVID relief money to put towards increasing housing opportunity and diversity in the state. Most of the money is going towards actually developing housing. A smaller chunk, it's about $5 million in total, is going towards these municipal planning and zoning grants. And the one that applies for most towns are these HOP grants, which are looking at housing opportunity. And the intention is that it is aimed at increasing housing opportunity within municipalities, and then looking at things like regulations in zoning and master planning, and the data that goes into all of that. So, the big caveat is, the intention is to increase housing opportunity. It's not to force anybody to do housing. It's not specifically workforce housing. It's not specifically affordable housing. It is more housing is needed. That's the main intent. There are three phases to all of this. Municipalities can choose to do one, two, three, all of them. They can do them out of order if they want to. But the one that most towns are going for is the Needs Analysis Planning Grants. Those are really the master planning grants. Those are being able to do a housing chapter with your master plan and updating other applicable sections of your master plan. A lot of that would be in, like, growth ordinances, transportation a little bit, if that plays into it, facilities, schools. That is what most towns are wanting to go for. So, I did work out a scope that's approximately through Task 5 of what doing a housing master plan chapter can look like. None of the funds with any of these grants require matching funds, so it's an unusual grant, and they are allowing up to $25,000 per community. Most master plan chapters do not require that level. One of the reasons the level is so high for the subsequent phases is because they want there to be more substantive public engagement and outreach. And also, in this case, a little bit of a deeper dive into the data. So, that would entail looking at things like your assessing data to get a better handle on what are the... What's the ratio of affordable to less affordable? What are the different increments of income levels that you're looking at? What has been built in the past 10 years? How many ADUs do you have in town? How many multifamily do you have? So, it's doing a little bit more of a deep dive. In some cases, that includes mapping, which by its nature becomes more expensive. Those applications have to be in by January 27th. RPC is putting together proposals for probably half a dozen towns, maybe a little bit more than that. For... A lot of them are doing this phase, the second phase of the HOP grants that you can do. And that's really what Task 6 is in this proposal, is doing a regulatory audit. What that means is looking at your regulations. So, this is mainly planning board, so zoning ordinances, site plan subdivision regulations. But it can include things like building code, health code items that are barriers to building more housing. And when I say barrier, I don't necessarily mean negative. Some barriers to building housing are things like wetland setbacks. You don't want to build in a wetland setback. That's a good barrier, because it serves other purposes, protecting water resources, flood control, all that kind of stuff. It's identifying what barriers exist, and then what opportunities are there for considering removing some of those barriers or changing them, so that you are increasing housing opportunity. That can be a whole range of things that target a whole range of housing. It can be things like allowing detached accessory dwelling units, if your town doesn't, allowing more than one accessory dwelling unit on certain lot sizes. It can be allowing more places where multifamily are allowed. It can be making it easier. So, the building code, if you have between... For multifamily, between three and six units, to use the International Residential Code versus the International Building Code, which makes it so the fire protection component for three to six units is not as stringent as it is under the International Building Code. I know that sounds sort of horrible, but it's intended to still, you know, preserve life and all that, but yet be a little bit more cost-effective. Allowing things like cottage villages, so smaller, like, more tiny homes, but on a cluster sort of subdivision. Or it can also be having more, you know, 50-unit apartment buildings, if that is something that your municipality can support with its infrastructure and septic capacity and wells. So, it can be a range of things that go into this audit. RPC will be designing the audit, so that it includes things like pros, cons, reasons you might not want to do something, what existing plans support or don't support that suggested change or recommended potential change. So, that's what we'll be doing for our audits. There is no specific formula for doing the audits, but those are for up to $50,000 for that phase of doing planning. And then, the third phase is actually doing the big regulation change and building support for getting that to get approved. So, that would be a lot more public outreach. It would be if you needed sketches from a landscape architect, if you needed mapping done, if you needed to have... If you were doing a certain parcel and needed more information on wetlands, it could include that. That's up to $100,000. And so, the audit, you have to submit that application by June 30th of next year. The actual full regulation change, if that's what you're going for, has to be submitted by November 2023. So, it's a phased approach. You can just start with Phase 1 if you want to, and then decide you want to do an audit. You can go from the master planning to the regulation change, if you already know what you want to do. So, there's some flexibility. The one that is coming up, though, is that master planning one. And it's the one that a lot of towns also need. You guys are on track to do your housing chapter anyway, so it honestly makes a lot of sense. So, that is my spiel. This is the sort of scope of work that can be worked into the application.
I have a quick question.
Yep.
Regarding... Because I see another survey on here. So, what if the results of the survey indicate results that are not conducive to more housing?
Honestly, the doing the master plan process helps to narrow down what options you have that are amenable to the community or not. So, it really helps to inform that. Given that you guys have done some survey work recently, there was not opposition in there to housing across the board. There was certainly a preference for single-family. There was a preference for not generally like really big apartment buildings, not having things that will compromise wetlands and natural resources. There are certainly preferences in there, but it wasn't an across-the-board, "Close the gate, no nothing ever."
Jim, do you have people coming in that are interested in, like, a detached accessory dwelling unit? And you just say, "Well..."
We don't allow that.
"We don't allow that," and it just showstopper?
In the past three years, there was one.
Really?
That surprises me.
Yeah, I'm surprised there's not more people that...
Maybe it doesn't make it as far to him.
I was gonna say...
Somebody's like, "I'm gonna do this." And then somebody else is like, "You can't do that. We're in Newton." And then it doesn't make it.
I found it with my barn, and then I'm like, you know, I can't do that.
That was somebody that already had converted their barn into... What was the way they referred to it? As an entertainment suite?
It's creative. With a kitchen and a bathroom and a shower.
They had built a second floor on top of their garage that had a full bathroom, a kitchenette, and was like 30 by... not quite 40.
1,200 square feet.
It was a large amount of space. And they were like, "Can we use that as an accessory apartment?" My first response was, "It already is."
Yeah.
And this was when Shanti was... And he looked at them and went, "No, we can't give you an occupancy permit, because you built it without..." So, they were coming to me to try to bring it into compliance. And I'm like, "No, it's a separate building. It's 40 feet from your house."
One of the latest things that I've seen out there as far as building goes, and I don't know if any of you have seen it or heard about it, is there seems to be a lot of developments that are popping up. And they're... You can call them tiny homes, but they're not tiny homes. They're the equivalent of like 400 to 800 square feet. So, they're like for a one-to-two person with a one-to-two bedroom, they're real small houses, but they do have septic, their water, and all of that. And they're putting them up, so that they can put a cluster of them, like a village, like Jen was talking about.
That's what the cottage type...
On a piece of property, exactly. And it seems to be spreading.
So, what do we need to do for next steps?
So, if you... If this sounds like something you want to pursue, the... At least guidance I need from you is, yes, we would like you to pursue this. And do you want to just start with the master planning work? And we can get into that a little bit, and then you could say, yes, we do want to do the audit. We have some towns that are wanting to just apply and get it over with. But you could just do one component and just see how it goes.
I think that we should probably just do that. I mean, and it makes sense, because we're already doing it with the master plan, so let's just fit it in.
So, the one thing is that these are rolling grants. So, while there are deadlines, people have already... people have already been awarded them. The money is not, is extensive, but it's not inexhaustible. So if you do wanna do, if you only wanna do the master plan right now, that's totally fine. I would encourage that, as we get into it, though, that we make a decision fairly early on if you want to apply for the audit, just to ensure that there's still funding available.
Right, sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
So that's what I would suggest, I would suggest that we definitely get right on that, the analysis and the planning grant, get that out, the survey out, see what that comes through within the next couple, you know, the next few weeks, and then within the next month or two months tops, we should make a determination, like you said, Jen, if we wanna follow through with that regulatory auto grant.
But this is just about housing, right? This is not about mixed use, or...
Um...
Or can we revise everything at the same time if there's minor revisions?
So the land use one, we're gonna keep moving forward with.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The housing, we can talk about things that are not singularly housing. We can talk about, would you be more interested in, you know, having more commercial uses that have to mix in residential? There are some towns where they want, you know, 50% commercial, 50% housing.
Yeah.
And that's when you allow mixed use.
'Cause I'm just thinking about, one, something that came out of the survey was people want more things in the village, basically, in terms of commercial use. And I know that in our regulations online, we've, we have a lot of language around how we would develop the village correctly if we were to do mixed use as part of that. So I'm just trying to think, like...
So, I mean, your village district does allow for mixed use. It allows for that, you know, shop on the bottom, apartment above. You haven't had a lot of people take you up on that. That, I mean, that is something you can also explore a little bit more.
Yeah.
You know, maybe, maybe the ratio isn't right. Maybe it needs to be just a throughout-town regulation and not just in specific areas. But that is, that is housing opportunity.
Yeah, that's fair, okay. Cool. Well, I would be supportive of the analysis and planning grant first. I don't think we need to hop into the audit just yet, being fully aware that we could run out of budget, but...
And we have been told that they're gonna, at least somewhat routinely, let us know, like, how much is left in the account.
So I guess could we lean on you for, if it feels like we're hitting a wall soon, to flag that?
I'm certainly gonna keep on tabs of it for not just you, for a lot of our towns.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So...
Do we need to do a conditional approval of that?
Nope, all I really need is consensus that, yes, you would like me to move forward with developing an application to help you do the needs analysis and master planning component of this.
Do we have consensus?
I believe so.
I think we already agreed to it a long time ago.
You agreed conceptually, but you didn't have at least a approximate scope.
Okay.
Yeah, no, this is great, thanks for pulling it together.
Do you want to do a motion?
No.
So I would come back with the application, and I would need, I actually would have to have the town submit the application. What happens is that the town submits the application, even if I write it up for you, then you have to select a consultant to do it, that's a qualified consultant. The RPCs are automatically, so...
Okay.
That's just procedurally how that would have to happen. But if we apply, and it's a, basically, if it's a reasonable application, they are getting approved, and it's a pretty fast turnaround, it doesn't have to go through governor and council like a lot of the more typical contracts. So Exeter, I believe, they applied, they went to their select board to get the final contractual signing, and they had funds available within four weeks approximately, so, which is really fast for this kinda grant.
Yeah, okay.
I have a question for Jen.
Yeah.
Jen, if the town is going to do this, that's the selectmen, so do we need to send a letter, draft a letter about this to the selectmen so that they can approve it or sign it or whatever?
The planning board can apply, but because of the funds, the select board would have to accept the funds. So I think as we, once I get the applications for the planning board to give its blessing, I think that would be sort of the time to then coordinate with the select board, although I'm gonna ask Bob if he can also sort of be our liaison in that need. So yes, Barbara, the select board has to be involved.
Yeah, that's what I thought, thank you.
But it's, it's the accepting of the funds, and there is no match required, I think I said that, but it's an important factor for most towns.
Yeah. Yeah, we would just have to have a town meeting, post it, accept the funds, and then the funds would just go where they were meant to go.
And actually, the way they're doing the funding for that, they can directly, actually, it doesn't have to come back through Newton if they know that we're your consultant.
Right.
They can just do it directly through us, so that makes it a little less...
Yeah, they hold the money, right.
Yeah, it makes it a little less accounting on...
That way there, the bookkeeper doesn't have to do it. Yeah, I saw that when I was reading about them.
Okay.
With that, I am done with all of my talking.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you for all your hard work, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
So I'd like to close the meeting at 8:20, 8:19.
Second, great. Thanks, guys.